All right, guys. Today, we are taking care of our June Town Hall meeting. I appreciate everyone who logged on. And I'm excited because we have a guest speaker today. June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And I know we can all kind of get inundated with all the awareness months. They're super long and every month, it seems, has 10 or so. But we do want to talk about elder abuse. Elder abuse is very real. Elder abuse is complicated. And June is a good time to talk about it. But June is not the only time we should talk about it. It falls under the realm of domestic violence. And today, we are excited because we have Lisa Walker here with us today. She's going to talk to us about elder abuse. She's the Vice President of Advocacy Resources with Bay Aging. And we have a wonderful partnership with Beijing. We were just talking before, the two are like a puzzle piece. And I know she has some amazing things. So she's got a presentation and a talk to give us today. And then we are going to open up the floor for questions. And I hope that everybody jumps in. This is being recorded. And wanted to let everybody know that it is also live streaming on Facebook as we speak. So just be mindful of that. If everybody could make sure they are muted while Lisa's talking. And then afterwards, we'll open the floor for some questions. Also, I do have a quick polling questionnaire at the end. If you could hang out just and fill out that questionnaire for me at the end, it would be very helpful to us. And without further ado, Lisa, thank you so much for doing this today. It was kind of a last minute thing. We had some scheduling conflicts and you came through with flying colors. We appreciate you.
Well, you're certainly welcome. And thanks for that disclaimer if y'all are disappointed.
Yeah, absolutely not. I'm sure this is going to be fantastic. We're very excited.
So are we ready to go? I'm gonna go ahead.
We are ready and recording. I want to double check everything. It looks like we are good to go. Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, let's see. Thought we had this already, but can you see my screen? Yes. Okay, so we're going to talk about elder abuse. And as Leslie said, Lisa Walker from Bay Aging. Bay Aging is a local agency on aging. And we partner with the Peninsula Agency on Aging to provide several programs. I wear many hats, as probably everybody else does. I am the local long-term care ombudsman, which we'll talk about in the presentation a little bit. And I'll also put a plug for my other hat. I am what's called a BiCap Counselor, Virginia Insurance Counseling and Assistance Program. So if anybody ever has any Medicare or insurance questions, you can give us a call for that. So we're going to talk about what is elder abuse? And why am I not going forward? Oh, now I want to fall. My apologies. I'm ready now. Sorry. Okay, so what is elder abuse? In general, elder abuse is a term referring to anybody knowing intentionally being neglect or neglectful act by a caregiver or any person that causes harm or serious risk upon to an older adult. Legislatures in all 50 states have passed some form of elder abuse prevention laws. And laws and definitions of elder abuse do vary by state. But broadly defined, they include, you know, we have physical abuse with the intentional physical force that results in illness, injury, pain, or functional impairment. Sexual abuse, any non-conceptual sexual act. Neglect caregivers or others responsible for caring for somebody failing to provide food, shelter, help, protection. Financial abuse. Misappropriation of someone's funds. Emotional, I think we see more of this of inflicting mental pain, anguish, distress, belittling somebody, you know, making them feel bad about themselves. Self-neglect, a person who fails to perform self-care tasks that threatens his or her health or safety. What are the warning signs? Well, these, you know, don't necessarily mean that they're signs of abuse, but they are some telltale signs that somebody would want to keep their eyes open for. With physical abuse, you know, obviously bruises, pressure marks or sores, broken bones, abrasions, burns. Sexual abuse, bruising or injury to the genital area may present with difficulty in moving or sitting for the person. Emotional, just kind of withdrawn from normal activities, expressing anxiety, depression, unusual behaviors or unease. Neglect, bed sores, unattended medical seats, needs, poor hygiene, unusual weight loss. Financial, uncharacteristic purchases by the individual or caregiver, failure to pay bills or keep appointments, questionable behavior. I think also under financial abuse, you know, all these scams. So it was brought out to me, somebody who ran into somebody in the grocery store buying all these gift cards because they were being scammed. So, you know, keeping your eye out for those kinds of things. What causes elder abuse to happen? Well, it's a combination of psychological, social, and economic factors along with mental and physical conditions of the victim and the perpetrator contribute to the occurrence of elder maltreatment. And the main risk, social isolation, which we've kind of just coming out of now with the pandemic. Lack of access, support, and resources. Physical, mental, and emotional dependence. Some of those factors can include dimension cognitive impairment, level of dependence on a caregiver, caregiver burnout and burden, living situations, it's home, nursing home, long-term care setting, financial circumstances, an imbalance relationship with one partner exerting control over the other, physical weakness. So who is likely to abuse an older person? Most cases of elder abuse are perpetrated by known and trusted others. This includes family members, friends, service providers, peers, and strangers. Abusers can be men or women or, and of any age, race, or social, economical status. So anybody can be an abuser. As I kind of mentioned earlier, con artists and scammers may target the elderly through schemes such as romance scams, fake contests, impersonating family members. You know, they are just calling, waiting for that person that's sitting at home lonely and wants somebody to talk to, and then they can kind of take advantage of them there. How can you help prevent elder abuse? Being vigilant and aware of the risk factors and signs of elder abuse is a key to prevention. Social isolation is one of the main risk factors in elder abuse. Stay connected with older adults and do what you can to connect them with the community and others. The Long-Term Care Ombudsman, which I mentioned, is one of my hats. We are advocates for residents of nursing homes and assisted living facilities. Ombudsmen provide information about how to find a facility, what to do to get good care, and help to resolve complaint issues. For the Peninsula area, Carol Turner is the Long-Term Care Ombudsman. Her number, 757-2201-577. And I am the Long-Term Care Ombudsman for the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. And my number is 804-758-2386. So please, you know, reach out if you have questions, concerns, and we can help direct you in the right direction. What if you suspect abuse? If you suspect, not know, but you suspect any type of abuse, you should contact the appropriate authority, which we'll reference below. You do not need to prove that the abuse is occurring. Just if you have a hint that something's not right, the professionals will investigate the claims of elder mistreatment. If someone is an immediate danger, please call 911 for law enforcement. Adult Protective Services, which is through our Department of Social Services. If danger is not imminent, report concerns to the local Adult Protective Services, or we call them APS. And then, of course, if you suspect abuse of a person living in a nursing home or assisted living, you can also contact the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program. And I'll tell you that the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program and APS work closely together. We kind of have different routes that we go, but we do partner up a lot. How to make an Adult Protective Services report? There is a 24-hour state APS hotline. That number is 1-888-832-3858. And I've listed the local social services. And I'll be happy to provide this presentation if anybody's interested. And keep in mind, you can make an anonymous complaint. I get people that call and say, well, I've called the local agency and nothing happened. You know, if you feel that nothing's happening or you have concerns, you can always call the state hotline. Or if you're afraid of giving your identity out, you don't have to. The philosophy of Adult Protective Services, to advocate for the capable adult, to determine the least restrictive intervention, preserve the adult's right to make decisions, to resolve the social problems of adult abuse neglect and financial exploitation, to support and strengthen the adult's informal support system, and to consider legal action only after all other alternatives have been explored. The goals of Adult Protective Services, obviously to stop the abuse, neglect, or exploitation by protecting the adult with the least restriction on his or her liberty, assisting the adult and remaining in their home as long as possible, restoring independent functioning to the greatest extent, assist in arranging for home placement when appropriate, the adult or guardian consents or the court orders emergency placement, legal action, involuntary protective services is always the last resort. I'm going to mention a little bit about mandated reporters. Medical professionals such as doctors, nurses, EMS folks, they are mandated reporters, as well as social workers, probation, eligibility workers, CASA, mental health, teachers, childcare, law enforcement, staff in residential care homes, group homes, anybody that's employed or volunteers for a public organization that cares for or has custody or control over children or adults, and anyone that's received approved training. The mandated reporter law requires that certain individuals reports against suspected cases of abuse, neglect, or exploitation. They're required to report it immediately. And any person who fails to make a report is subject to civil penalty. So what happens after you report your suspicions to APS? If APS decides the situation may violate state elder abuse laws, it would be assigned to a caseworker who would complete an investigation. If it's an emergency, it's done within 24 hours. And I believe we have to lay eyes on the person within five days. So they do go out kind of immediately. If the victim needs crisis intervention, they will direct to the appropriate services and enforcement. If the abuse is not substantiated, not confirmed, most agencies will still work as necessary with the community agencies to obtain social and health services for that person. Adult Protective Services provides social services to ensure the safety and well-being of the elders or persons with disabilities. Interventions by APS could include receiving the reports of abuse neglect and exploitation, case planning, monitoring, evaluation, investigating, and arranging for services. And one thing that's very important to keep in, to remember, that an older person has the right to refuse services. And they cannot provide services only if the senior or the elder agrees or has been declared incapacitated by the court and a guardian has been appointed. This would be something at the last resort. So a lot of times we'll say, well, we called and we reported this situation and nothing happened. If that person's competent, then they can refuse the services. APS would certainly try to work with that person to provide services. But I think that's why some people see that we're frustrated because they don't see anything happening. What should you expect when you call for help? When making the call, be ready to give the person's name, address, contact information, and all the details of why you're concerned. You may be asked some questions to provide the authorities more information. Questions could include questions about any medical conditions or any confusion, dementia. What kind of family or social supports are there? Have they heard of any incidents? Have they really seen yelling or hitting or other abusive behavior? And you might be asked for your contact information. But as I said, you don't have to identify yourself in Virginia. So what kind of reports does Adult Protective Services receive? I pulled out from their 2020 report. You can see self-neglect is highest up there. Then just neglect and exploitation. And then the abuse is further down. So 54% is more self-neglect and the rest is more abuse. Also, where does the abuse happen? We can see mainly it's in the home. And you think about that social isolation and then other facilities. And then it goes down from there. We just celebrated yesterday the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. I'm sure everybody was celebrating, but you can mark your calendar for next year. It's every year on June 15th. So next year, you can make sure to recognize that. And I am kind of finished up here, but I wanted to, we'll stop sharing in a minute. But I want to mention some resources and a thank you. I got a lot of this information, the National Center for Elder Abuse on their website, the Department of Social Services. And I want to give a special thank you to Jamie Blanchard with Gloucester Social Services, who helped me with creating this presentation. So stop. And I'm here. Yay.
Lisa, thank you so much. I learned a lot. And before I forget, is there any way we could get a copy of those slides?
Certainly, I will send those to you as soon as we finish. Yes, I was in the please share because I know there was a lot of information in there that it would be helpful to have it in hand.
Yeah, absolutely. So now, you know, and keep in mind with everybody's time, and I know it's lunchtime, but we do want to open up the floor for questions. I know that when I give presentations, I can truly appreciate the questions because they drive the presentation where the audience wants to go, right? So if you have questions, you can feel free to unmute yourself and ask or send them to me and I will ask for you. And to kind of kick things off, and another reminder, I said it at the beginning, but if you guys could hang tight, I do have a poll that I would love for you guys to complete at the end. It would be super helpful. But my first question, I actually came over on the chat. And is there a relationship that one partner is being abused as a result of their depart? Actually, I was going to ask the same question. Being abused as a result of their partner's decline in health? And what resource does the abuse partner have? So I'm assuming that this means like it's a dementia-related issue and the spouse. And I'm sure you do see that and it hits home for me. So I'm curious about your response to this.
Well, and I see that in the nursing homes a lot, especially because people come in, husband and wife, they're living in the same room or in the same area. And that's, you know, one, they have dementia, both, one, and can be aggressive. So, you know, Adult Protective Services can get involved. But it's that, you know, if it's at the home situation, it's certainly more concerning and you certainly want to get some help, support for, you know. If one person does have dementia, a caregiver always needs support because if anybody deals with dementia, it's a lot. And the nursing homes will see a lot of creativity that we might have to separate those spouses if they're willing. It can be very difficult.
Yeah, so in a home situation, there are resources out there to kind of help with, you know, solutions to problems. A lot of times, I think it's just, it's nice to have another party to kind of look at the situation and offer some solutions that'll be beneficial to everybody involved.
And in getting family involved, if there is, I know a lot of times, you know, the children, long-distance caregivers might not be aware and just think their hands get, you know, somebody caring for somebody and the situation gets out of control. So it's good to get those family members involved to help ease the burden.
Great. Thank you. Does it, did anybody else have any questions? So I actually have one and it.
Comment, and I think there's a Candace.
Candace, awesome. I didn't see you. You go first. That's great.
Okay. I know in case management, in the past, especially working with people with developmental disabilities, a lot of times in your presentation, you were mentioning that, you know, a lot of these services are voluntary. And especially when it comes to this population, a lot of times, they don't necessarily want to utilize resources. And I know when you said that APS comes in, sometimes they're saying like, oh, there's a problem here. But a lot of times, it's a voluntary type service. So you can't really force anybody to utilize it. I was just wondering like your experience with that and what services maybe? I know you had mentioned that family members can help a lot with that. And that's what I would probably go by. But do you know anything else that maybe a person could do if a person is like more reluctant to get services?
Well, and I'm not with APS, but I do work with them. And I know that even if somebody's declining services, I see them still following up, trying to, you know, be a support, providing, you know, checking in with them and all. And, you know, again, getting maybe away from that isolation if they can, you know, with the elders, the adult daybreak centers, getting them out. And I think also, you know, anybody of the younger people, if they have intellectual disabilities, getting them out to those daybreak centers. That also gives them more support with the case managers who, if they're being followed by the CSD. So I don't know if that helps.
It does, does. Thank you, Candace. My question is more on self, sort of, we were talking about self-neglect. And so you get to a point as a family member, when you're caring for somebody, and you may or may not have an answer to this, but it's come up in the past when you have, you talk about abuse and harming themselves or someone else when it comes to driving. What are options for family members when it comes to fear of harm? Fear of harm for somebody else on the road or themselves? What do you see as an option there?
Well, I do know the answer. You can report them to the DMV. And they will, you can, I know I haven't done it in a while, but you can go on and report it and they will call them in for a driving test.
Okay.
Another thing they recommend is, you know, talking to the physician. It's not always good for the family member to be the bad guy. So see if you can get somebody else, you know, talking to the physician who maybe they would say, you know, got concerns. And then also that DMV for them to call them in. So I will mention, they do have, I think in Williamsburg, you know, they have the driver assessment. And I can't, I'll get you the information. Where they, you can go in and they actually do a driving test to test your reactions and your driving ability and that. And I think you can get a discount on insurance and all. So that, and that's another way, if you're not doing, you know, if you're doing that simulated driving and you hit everything on site, that might be a good sign that, hey, maybe, you know, your score didn't go so well. We need to rethink things. I'll get you that information.
Wow, great. And I did get another question over on the chat. And her question is a good one. And what is the prevalence of romance scams in the area? And I did follow up a little bit with that because I wasn't familiar with the term. I'm sure you are.
I've heard, I don't, to have the other side, I don't know.
She said it was basically anybody of younger people that, you know, that tried to cultivate a relationship with an older person in order to basically scam money.
And I've seen it. I mean, you know, when they do kind of try to take advantage, and that's again with those phone calls and those scammers, you just, they, people are lonely. And they start talking to these people and now they're paying attention to them. And they, you know, but then it gets to, I've heard of the, they're saying they're a military person. They're overseas and now they need some money. I don't know how prevalent, I think it's probably a lot more prevalent than we know.
Sure. I would imagine it would be a difficult thing to prove, to be honest. You know, family, that's when family gets involved and then. But we were just curious on your stance on it. And are we seeing an uptick in it now with isolation and everything?
And I was trying to look because I knew the APS report and I would look. Um, I just forgot my thought. I'm sorry.
Quite all right. I do this daily, daily. It happens to me. Getting, anything after 20 is just not for sissies.
I will have to, I think, I know it's underreported and seniors are so, or anybody is so embarrassed to report it because they don't want people to know they were taken advantage of.
Yeah, and I think that correlates also with domestic violence. It's the same thing. It's the, there is shame involved with something like that. So I do believe it is morbidly underreported. Thank you. So how about anybody else? Does anybody else have any questions? Lisa, this was wonderful. Thank you so much. And if everybody could just hang tight, I'm going to post a poll. And I'm going to talk real quick about an event that we have coming up in October that I'm excited about while the polling is going on. And I'm going to, if everybody could fill this out, I would be eternally grateful. But while you were doing this, I wanted to take a quick second and talk about an event that is scheduled for October 2nd. And it's an in-person event, which I, I can't tell you how excited I am to be involved in an in-person event again. It is going to be on the Middle Peninsula in Gloucester at Beaver Dam Park. We are doing a Volksmarch. It's an awareness event. In the next couple of weeks, if you could follow us on social media, you will see us begin to really blow this up. We are looking for bike clubs. There is a nine-mile biking course. There will be, I believe, a three-mile hiking course. And even a kids' event. It's going to be a lot of fun. And we are just wanting to get out there and just bring domestic violence out as a talk. Let's talk about it. Let's not be ashamed about it. And really just a good day of chatting and outdoors. And usually October, well, let's face it, October can be very cold or it can be hot as Hades around here, who knows? But it's going to be fun nevertheless. And I hope everybody can be a part of it. We're looking for sponsors as we speak. Um, we're looking for sponsors as we speak. We are, um, I just think it's going to be a wonderful event, and I hope that everybody can can set that date, save the date. For October second, it's a Volk's March and Ride. If you are a member of a running club. Or if you know of a running club, or if you know of a cycle club, anything, we we really want to get a hold of those guys. So I appreciate you guys and it looks like we have. We give this poll just a few more minutes to make sure that. Everybody has filled out and it looks like we are good to go. Um, you guys, thank you so much, especially Lisa, this was fantastic. It was wonderful. I look forward to getting the slides. And um, of course, if you have any questions regarding elder abuse, whether it be personal or. With um friend or family, please let us know. We can help. Avalon is here. We're here to respond. We have counselors, we have our um our twenty-four hour hotline that can guide you in the right direction. And um, we appreciate you guys as always. Lisa, I appreciate you and you guys have a fan use. She's the Vice President of Advocacy Resources with Bay Aging. And we have a wonderful partnership with Beijing. Um, we we were just talking before, the two are like a puzzle piece. And um, I know she has some amazing things, so she's got a presentation and a talk to give us today. And then we are going to open up the floor for questions. And I hope that everybody jumps in. This is being recorded. Um, and wanted to let everybody know that it is also live streaming on Facebook as we speak. So um, just be mindful of that. If everybody could make sure they are muted. While Lisa's talking and then afterwards, we'll we'll open the floor for some questions. Also, I do have a quick polling questionnaire at the end. If you could hang out just and fill out that questionnaire for me at the end. It would be very helpful to us. And without further ado, Lisa, thank you so much for doing this today. It was kind of a last minute thing. We had some some scheduling conflicts and you came through with flying colors. We appreciate you.
Well, you're certainly welcome. And thanks for that disclaimer if y'all are disappointed.
Yeah, absolutely not. I'm sure this is going to be fantastic. We're very excited.
So are we ready to go? I'm gonna.
We we are ready and recording. I want to double check everything. It looks like we are good to go. Thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, let's see. Uh, thought we had this already, but can you see my screen? Yes. Okay, so we're going to talk about elder abuse. And as Leslie said, I'm Lisa Walker from Bay Aging. Um, Bay Aging is a local agency on aging and we partner with the Peninsula Agency on Aging. To provide several programs. Um, I wear many hats, as probably everybody else does. Um, I am the local long-term care ombudsman, um, which we'll talk about in our, in the presentation a little bit. And um, I'll also put a plug for my other hat. I am uh what's called a Vicat Counselor. Um, Virginia Insurance Counseling and Assistance Program. So if anybody ever has any Medicare or insurance questions. You can give us a call for that. So we're going to talk about what is elder abuse. And why am I not going forward? Oh, now I want to fall. My apologies. I'm ready now. Um. Sorry. Okay, so what is elder abuse? In general, elder abuse is a term referring to anybody knowing intentionally. Or um, being neglect or an neglectful act for uh by a caregiver. Any person that causes harm or serious risk of harm to an older adult. Uh, legislatures in all fifty states have passed some form of elder abuse prevention laws. And laws and definitions of elder abuse do vary by state, but broadly defined, they include. Um, you know, we have physical abuse with the intentional physical force that results in illness, injury, pain. Or functional impairment, uh sexual abuse of abuse, any non-consensual sexual. Um, act, neglect, caregivers or others responsible for caring for somebody failing to provide. Food, shelter, health, um, protection, financial abuse, um, misapproach. Misappropriation of someone's funds, um, emotional. Um, I think we see more of this of inflicting mental pain, anguish, distress. Um, belittling somebody, you know, making them feel bad about themselves. Uh, self neglect, um, a person who fails to perform self-care tasks. That threatens his or hers health or safety. Um, what are the warning signs? Um, well, these, you know, don't necessarily mean that they're signs of abuse. But they are some telltale signs that somebody would want to keep their eyes open for. Um, with physical abuse, you know, obviously bruises, uh pressure marks or sores, broken bones, abrasions. Burns, uh sexual abuse, bruising or injury to the genital area. Um, may present with difficulty in moving or sitting for the the person. Emotional, just kind of withdrawn um from normal activities, e- expressing anxiety, depression. Unusual behaviors or unease, neglect, um, bed sores, unattended medical seats. Uh, needs, poor hygiene, unusual weight loss. Um, financial, uncharacteristic purchases by the individual or caregiver. Uh, failure to pay bills or keep appointments, questionable behavior. Um, I think also under financial abuse, you know, all these scams, so um. Was brought out to me, somebody who ran into somebody in the grocery store buying all these gift cards because they were being scanned. So, you know, keeping your eye out for those kind of things. Um, what causes elder abuse to happen? Well, it's a combination of psychological, social and economic factors. Along with mental and physical conditions of the victim and the perpetrator. Um, contribute to the occurrence of elder maltreatment. And the main risk, um, social isolation, which we've kind of just coming out of now with the pandemic. Um, lack of access, support and resources, um, physical, mental and emotional dependence. Um, some of those factors can include um dimension cognitive impairment. Uh, level of dependence on a caregiver, caregiver burnout and burden. Um, living situations, it's home, nursing home, uh long-term care setting, financial circumstances. An imbalance relationship with one partner exerting control over the other, um, physical weakness. So who is likely to abuse an older person? Uh, most cases of elder abuse are perpetrated by known and trusted others. Um, this includes family members, friends, service providers, peers and strangers. Abusers can be men or women or, and of any age, race or social economical status. So anybody, you know, can be an abuser. Um, as I kind of mentioned earlier, con artists and scammers may target the elderly through schemes such as romance scams. Fake contests, impersonating family members. Um, you know, they are just calling, waiting for that person that's sitting at home lonely and wants somebody to talk to. And then they can kind of take advantage of them there. How can um you help prevent elder abuse? Uh, being vigilant and aware of the risk factors and signs of elder abuse is a key to prevention. Social isolation is one of the main risk factors in elder abuse. Stay connected with older adults and do what you can to connect them with the community and others. Um, the long-term care ombudsman, which I mentioned, is one of my hats. Uh, we are advocates for residents of nursing homes and assisted living facilities. Uh, ombudsmen provide information about how to find a facility, uh what to do to get good care. And help to resolve complaint issues. Uh, for the peninsula area, Carol Turner is um. The long-term care ombudsman. Her number seven five seven two two year, five two two zero one five seven seven. And I am the long-term care ombudsman for the Northern, neck and middle peninsula. And my number is eight oh four seven five eight two three eight six. So please, you know, reach out if you have questions, um, concerns, and we can help direct you in the right direction. Um, what if you suspect abuse? If you, and I suspect, not know, but you suspect any type of abuse. You should contact the appropriate authority, um, which we'll reference below. You do not need to prove that the abuse is occurring. Um, just if you have a hint that something's not right. Uh, the professionals will investigate the claims of elder mistreatment. If someone is an immediate danger, please call nine one one for law enforcement. Um, adult protective services, which is through our Department of Social Services. If danger is not imminent, report concerns to the local adult protective services, or we call them APS. Um, and then, of course, if you suspect abuse of a person living in a nursing home or assisted living. You can also contact the long-term care ombudsman program. And I'll tell you that the long-term care ombudsman program and APS work closely together. We kind of have um. Different routes that we go, but we do partner up a lot. Um, how to make an adult protective services report, there is a twenty-four hour state APS hotline. That number is one eight 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 three two three eight five eight. And I've listed um the local social services and I'll be happy to uh provide this presentation if anybody's interested. Um, and keep in mind, you can make an anonymous complaint. Um, I get people that'll call and say, well, I've called the local agency and nothing happened. You know, if you feel that nothing's happening or you have concerns, you can always call the state hotline. Or if you're afraid of giving your identity out, you don't, you don't have to. Um, the philosophy of adult protective services, um, to advocate for the capable adult. To determine the least restrictive intervention, uh preserve the adult's right to make decisions. To resolve the social problems of adult abuse neglect and financial exploitation. To support and strengthen the adults' informal support system. And to consider legal action only after all other alternatives have been explored. Uh, the goals of adult protective services, obviously to stop the abuse, neglect or exploitation. By protecting the adult with the least restriction on his or her liberty. Assisting the adult and remaining in their home as long as possible. Restoring independent functioning to the greatest extent. Assist in arranging for home placement when appropriate. Um, the adult or guardian consents or the court orders emergency placement. Legal action, um involuntary involuntary protective services is always the last resort. I'm going to mention a little bit about mandated reporters. Um. Medical professionals such as doctors, nurses, um EMS folks. They are mandated reporters as well as social workers, probation, eligibility workers, CASA, mental health. Teachers, childcare, law enforcement, staff in residential care homes, group homes. Anybody that's um employed or volunteers for a public organization that that cares for. Um, or has custody or control over children or adults. Um, and anyone that's received approved training. Uh, the mandated reporter law requires that certain individuals were reports against suspected cases of abuse. Neglect or exploitation, they're required to report it immediately. And any person who fails to make a report is subject to civil penalty. So what happens after you report your suspicions to APS? If APS decides the situation may violate state elder abuse laws. Um, it would be assigned to a caseworker who would complete an investigation. If it's an emergency, it's done within twenty-four hours. And I believe, um, they have to lay eyes on the person within five days. Um, so they do go out kind of immediately. Um, if the victim needs crisis intervention, they will direct to the appropriate services and enforcement. If the abuse is not substantiated, not confirmed. Uh, most agencies will still work as necessary with the community agencies to obtain social and health services for that person. Um, adult protective services provide social services to ensure the safety and well-being of the elders. Or persons with disabilities. Um, interventions by APS could include um receiving the reports of abuse. Neglect and exploitation, case planning, monitoring, evaluation, investigating. And arranging for services. And one thing that's very important to key in. To remember that an older person has the right to refuse services. Um, and they cannot provide services if, um, only if the senior or the elder agrees. Or has been declared incapacitated by the court and a guardian has been appointed. Um, this would be something at the last resort. So a lot of times we'll say, well, we we called and we reported this situation. And nothing happened. If that person's competent, then they can refuse the services. APS would certainly try to work with that person to provide services. But I think that's why some people see that or frustrated because they don't see anything happening. Uh, what should you expect when you call for help? Um, when making the call, be ready to give the person's name, address, contact information and all the details. Um, of why you're concerned. You may be asked some questions um to provide the authorities more information. Uh, questions could um include questions about any medical conditions or any, you know, confusion, dementia. What kind of family or social supports are there? Have they heard of any incidents? Have they really seen yelling or hitting? Or other abusive behavior? And you might be asked for your contact information, but as I said. Um, you don't have to identify yourself in Virginia. So what kind of reports does adult protective services receive? I pulled out from their twenty twenty report. Um, you can see self neglect is is um highest up there. Um, then just neglect and exploitation and then the abuse is is further down. So uh fifty-four percent is more self neglect and the rest is um more abuse. Um, also, where does the abuse happen? We can see mainly it's in the home and you think about that social isolation, um, and then other facilities. Um, and then it goes down from there. Um, I, we just celebrated yesterday the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Um, I'm sure everybody was celebrating, but you can mark your calendar for next year. It's every year on June fifteenth. So um, next year you can make sure to recognize that. And I am kind of finished up here, but I wanted to, um, we'll be stopped sharing in a minute. But I want to mention some resources and a thank you. Um, I got a lot of this information, the National Center for Elder Abuse. Um, in their website, the Department of Social Services. And I want to give a special thank you to Jamie Blanchard with Gloucester Social Services who helped me with um creating this presentation. So stop. And I'm here. Yay.
Lisa, thank you so much. I learned a lot. Um, and I I, before I forget, is there any way we could get a copy of those slides?
Certainly. I will send those to you as.
Great.
As soon as we finish. Yes, I I was in the please share. Um, because I know there was a lot of information in there, um, that it would be helpful to have it in hand.
Yeah, absolutely. So now, um, you know, and keep in mind with everybody's time, and I know it's lunchtime. But we do want to open up the floor for questions. Um, I know that when I give presentations, I can truly appreciate the questions. Because they drive the presentation where the audience wants to go, right? So if you have questions, you can feel free to to unmute yourself and ask or uh send them to me. And I will ask for you um and to kind of kick things off. And I, another reminder, I said it at the beginning, but if you guys could hang tight, I do have a poll that I would love for you guys to complete at the end. It would be super helpful. Um, but I, my first question, I actually came over on the chat. And um, is is there a relationship that one partner is being abused as a result of theirs depart? Actually, I was going to ask the same question, being abused as a result of their partner's decline in health. And and what resource does the? And, and what resource does the abused partner have? So I'm, I'm assuming that this means like if it's a dementia-related issue, and the spouse, and I'm sure you do see that, and it hits home for me. So I, I'm quite curious about your response to this.
Well, and, and I've seen that in the nursing homes a lot, especially because people come in, husband and wife, they're living in the same room, or you know, the same area. In, in, that's, you know, one, they, they have dementia, both, one, and can be aggressive. So, you know, Adult Protective Services can get involved. But it's that, you know, if it's at the home situation, it's certainly more concerning, and you certainly want to get some help. Support for, you know, if, if one person does have dementia, a caregiver always needs support, because is anybody dealing with dementia, it's, it's a lot. In the nursing homes, we'll see a lot of creativity that we might have to separate those spouses if, if they're willing. It, it can be very difficult.
Yeah, so in a home situation, there are resources out there to kind of help with, with, you know, solutions to problems. A lot of times, I think it's just, it's nice to have another per, party to kind of look at the situation and offer some, some solutions that'll be beneficial to everybody involved.
And, and in getting family involved, if there is, I, I know a lot of times, you know, the children, long-distance caregivers might not be aware. And just think their hands get, you know, somebody caring for somebody, and the situation gets out of control. So it's, it's good to get those family members involved to help ease the burden.
Great. Thank you. Does, did anybody else have any questions? So I actually have one, and it,
And I think there's a Candace.
Candace, awesome. I didn't see you. You go first. That's great.
Okay. I know in case management, in the past, especially working with people with developmental disabilities, a lot of times in your presentation, you were mentioning that, you know, a lot of these services are voluntary, and especially when it comes to this population, a lot of times they don't necessarily want to utilize resources. And I know when you said that APS comes in, sometimes they're saying like, oh, there's a problem here. But a lot of times, it's, it's a voluntary type service, so you can't really force anybody to utilize it. I was just wondering, like, your experience with that, and what services maybe? I know you had mentioned that family members can help a lot with that, and that's what I would probably go by. But do you know anything else that maybe a person could do if a person is like more reluctant to get services?
Um, well, I, and, and I'm not with APS, but I, I do work with them. And I know that even if somebody's declining services, I see them still following up, trying to, you know, be a support. Provided, you know, checking in with them and all, and, you know, again, getting maybe away from that isolation if they can, you know, with the elders, the adult daybreak centers. Getting them out, and I think also, you know, anybody of the younger people, if they have intellectual disabilities, getting them out to those daybreak centers. That, that also gives them more support with the, the case managers, who, if they're being followed by the CSD. So I don't know if that helps.
It does, does. Thank you, Candace. My question is more on self, sort of, we were, we were talking about self-neglect. And so you get to a point as a, as a family member, when you're caring for somebody, and, and you may or may not have an answer to this. But it's come up in the past, when you have, you, you talk about abuse and harming themselves or someone else when it comes to driving. What are options for family members when it comes to fear of, of harm, fear of harm for somebody else on the road or themselves? What, what do you see as an option there?
Well, I do know the answer. You can report them to the DMV. And they will, you can, well, I know, I haven't done it in a while, but you go on and report it, and they will call them in for a driving test.
Okay.
Another thing they recommend is, you know, talking to the physician. It's not always good for the family member to be the bad guy. So see if you can get somebody else, you know, talking to the, the physician who maybe they would say, you know, were got concerns. And then also that DMV for them to call them in. I will mention, they do have, I think at River, in Williamsburg, you know, they have the driver assessment. And I can't, I'll, I'll get you the information. Where they, you can go in, and they actually do a, a driving test to, to test your reactions and your driving ability and that. And I think you can get a discount on insurance and all, so that, and that's another way, if you're not doing, you know, if you're doing that simulated driving and you hit everything on site, that might be a good sign that, hey, maybe, you know, your score didn't go so well. We need to rethink. I'll get you that information.
Wow, great. And I did get another question over on the chat. And her question is a good one, and what is the prevalence of romance scams in the area? And I did follow up a little bit with that, because I wasn't familiar with the term. I'm sure you are.
I've heard, I don't, to have the other side, I don't know.
She said it was basically anybody of younger people that, you know, that tried to cultivate a relationship with an older person in order to basically scam money.
And I, I, I've, I've seen it. I mean, you know, when, when they do kind of try to take advantage, and that's again with those phone calls, and those scammers, you just, they, people are lonely. And they start talking to these people, and now they're paying attention to them, and they, you know, but then it gets to, I've heard of, the, they're saying they're a military person, and they're overseas, and now they need some money. I don't know how prevalent, I think it's probably a lot more prevalent than we know.
Sure. I would imagine it would be a difficult thing to prove, to be honest. You know, family, that's when family gets involved, and then. But we, we were just curious on your stance on it, and, and are we seeing an uptick in it now with isolation and everything?
And I was trying to look, because I know the APS report, and I will look. I just forgot my thought. I'm sorry.
Quite all right. I do this daily, I, daily. I, it happens to me. Getting, yeah, anything after twenty is just not for sissies.
I will have to, I, I, I think, I know it's underreported, and I, in, in seniors or so, or anybody is so embarrassed to report it.
Yeah.
Because they, they don't want people to know they were, they were taken advantage of.
Yeah, and I think that correlates also with domestic violence. It's the same thing. It's, it's the, there is shame involved with something like that. So I, I do believe it is morbidly underreported. Thank you. So how about anybody else? Does anybody else have any questions? Lisa, this was wonderful. Thank you so much. And if everybody could just hang tight, I'm gonna post a poll. And I'm gonna talk real quick about an event that we have coming up in October that I'm excited about while the polling is going on. And I'm going to, if everybody could fill this out, I would be eternally grateful. But while you were doing this, I wanted to take a quick second and talk it about an, an event that is scheduled for October second, and it's an in-person event, which I, I, I can't tell you how excited I am to be involved in an in-person event again. It is going to be on the Middle Peninsula in Gloucester, at Beaver Dam Park. We are doing a Volksmarch, it's an awareness that event. In the next couple of weeks, if you could follow us on social media, you will see us begin to really blow this up. We are looking for bike clubs. There is a nine-mile biking course. There will be, I believe, a three-mile hiking course, and even a kids' event. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and we are just wanting to get out there and just bring domestic violence out as a, as a talk. Let's talk about it. Let's not be, be ashamed about it. And really just a good day of, of, of chatting and, and outdoors. And usually October, well, let's face it, October can be very cold, or it can be hot as Hades around here, who knows? But it's gonna be fun nevertheless, and I hope everybody can, can be a part of it. We're looking for sponsors. As we speak, we are, I just think it's gonna be a wonderful event. And I hope that everybody can, can set that date, save the date for October second. It's a Volksmarch and ride. If you are a member of a running club, or if you know of a running club, or if you know of a cycle club, anything, we, we really want to get ahold of those guys. So I appreciate you guys. And it looks like we have, let me give this poll just a few more minutes to make sure that everybody has filled out, and it looks like we are good to go. You guys, thank you so much, especially Lisa. This was fantastic. It's wonderful. I look forward to getting the slides. And of course, if you have any questions regarding elder abuse, whether it be personal or with friend or family, please let us know. We can help. Avalon is here. We're here to respond. We have counselors. We have our, our twenty-four-hour hotline that can guide you in the right direction. And we appreciate you guys as always. Lisa, I appreciate you, and you guys have a fantastic day.
Thank you all so much. And yes, anything I can do, just let me know. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Yes, you too. I appreciate you.